Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. I will call the Board of Selectmen's January 27th, 2025 meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. We're going to go straight into the Town Administrator's Report this evening.
Thank you. So the first item in my report is just a brief update on the process for interviewing candidates for the Chief of Police vacancy, which is expected in April of this year. The preliminary screening committee has conducted a number of interviews. There are several candidates that are being asked back for continuations of preliminary interviews, and it's the hope of the screening committee to bring two finalists to the selectmen in the near future. So that's really all I wanted to say about that, was just to provide the update.
Great, thank you.
With respect to a contract from Municipal Fuel Depot Design, I did have a total of five firms that submitted proposals. And the one that showed the most interest and actually came to the town before submitting a proposal was Web Engineering. Web is also coming in at $15,000 for the initial scope of services and will still be within the 25 when we have to have additional services with respect to this project. A couple of other engineering firms came in at 25 or 24,500, but they don't have the level of detail and the individualized attention. One of the firms is a much larger firm, so I think that Web Engineering is a good fit, and I recommend that the Board hire Web Engineering to develop the design for the municipal fuel depot.
Do you have a different document that shows all the details of Web Engineering? Because I'm just looking at one of the other companies, and they give exactly what the per hourly rate's going to be for everything, and they give the mileage.
No, that's their whole proposal.
This is their whole proposal, so how do we know what we're getting? I mean, I know that it says what we're not getting.
It's just in a list form here. You know, it's talking about, let's see. "We'll include initial phase whereby we'll examine one or more configurations that will allow the town to evaluate the spatial requirements determining the exact, in determining the exact location. Design will include mechanical, structural, fencing, traffic protection, and schematic electrical design. It will include overfill protection, anti-siphon, secondary containment, and spill prevention. It will not include fire suppression." So what they're saying here is, they're going to design, fully design the system, but not set it at a particular location on the site. And the others are talking about, you know, how choosing the site and setting it in place, but they went right up to the maximum. And speaking with this engineer, he's saying that it's probably going to be around 20,000 altogether, not even go to the 25.
Okay.
And he has a really good grasp on it, and he does small municipal fuel depots like this on a regular basis.
And has he done for municipalities? Do you know?
Yeah, municipal, yes. He specializes in it. So I would still recommend Web.
I agree with you on recommending Web. I just want to say, I know that we, so Alva, for your knowledge, we are scheduled for a stakeholder meeting on February 11th to meet at the transfer station and have the DPW, the Police Department, and the Fire Department, which will be the three departments that are using the fuel depot, meet there. So there can be a conversation, because my concern is the location of this and making sure that we're being financially prudent in the location of the depot. We need to talk about where gas lines need to be run for a generator, where electric is going to drop off a pole, if in fact it's going to need further paving. We want to know how far down we're going to dig for that. So I want to make sure that the cost doesn't start to run up because of its potential location. So we do have a stakeholders' meeting to be onsite and actually talk about that.
Does the conservation need to be involved with picking the site? I mean...
No, most of the, most of the places that it would logically go are over 200 feet from the river and over 100 feet from a wetland. So there's no jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
I will make a motion to award the design contract for a municipal fuel depot to Web Engineering, 111 Summer Street, Situate, Mass.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item has to do with the Senior Center elevator. As I've mentioned to the Board, this coming calendar year, all elevators in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are going to have to be tested by the state inspector, fully loaded, meaning their weight capacity is going to be added to the elevator car, and they're going to test the elevator that way. That's not a problem when we're on street power, but over at the Senior Center, we already know that testing the elevator on generator power, where the generator is already kind of at the max output for just testing it empty, we know it's not going to pass. So there are two things you could do. You could, three things, actually. You could say, "We're not going to have a generator in this building at all anymore." You could say, "We're going to keep the generator we have and install a certain device," which I'll get back to, "or you could replace the generator with something that's powerful enough to run the fully loaded car on generator." The reason that if you have a generator that won't fully power the elevator, you need a special device, is because if the power goes out while someone's riding in it and the elevator will not restart, there may not even be a way to lower it, let alone bring the person up to the second floor. And so the battery lowering device is simple. If the power is ever interrupted, the car, whether it's got people in it or not, is going to, by battery, come back down to the first floor, stop, and the doors will open. So those are the three options.
And I'm sorry, so does it take an action on a human? Or is it just going to, when the lights go out, the generator kicks on and the elevator goes to the first floor?
There'll be, under this scenario, the battery lowering device, the generator will no longer be wired to the elevator at all.
Oh, okay.
And so what happens is, the power goes out, and the battery device guarantees that the elevator is going to return to the first floor, and the door is going to open. And that's going to happen whether it was at the second floor with no one on it, or if somebody happened to be on it while the power went out.
Okay, so it's not one of those, you get one and done? You get to, everybody gets to go in and press the button and go down?
It goes down once and stops. You will not get back up during the power outage.
So if you have people on the second floor, your option is to call the Fire Department and have them bring the people that can't use the stairs down manually. They're going to help them get to the first floor. My question on this is, I know that we're talking about correcting something that we assume is going to happen. What would it cost for us to actually test the elevator under full load with generator power?
We would just have to get enough weight and know that we had 2,500 pounds of weight, because that's the capacity of this thing. So you could probably do it with bags of road salt, anything like that, okay? Because you know that there's whatever, 40 pounds in a bag, and we must have a lot on hand, and you could do that.
That would be silly. Do, I mean, would the state come out with their actual weights in weigh this?
I can ask, but I doubt it. I don't even know if they have, I don't know where these, where they're going to even get this stuff. I mean, some elevators...
Isn't that really the question? If the state is coming out here with weights to put this under test, under full weight...
Yes, but you're going to pay them to do that.
Right.
I don't think they're just going to come out with, I can check.
When, when, when the Senior Center was built and the elevator was installed, there was a weight limit, which is 2,500 pounds.
Right.
You would think that somebody sizing the generator at that point would have sized the generator properly for the weight capacity.
Well, what happened is, there was no generator at first.
Okay.
The generator that was put in place was then donated by a private company.
Oh.
It's, "We have this generator, do you want it?" It got installed, and the transfer switch, which is still good, got installed. Now, when that generator was no longer useful, the generator company that brought in the new generator said, "Yeah, we're going to give you something that does what this does." And it actually does power the thing, and we do pass inspections without the car loaded. But that's why the elevator inspector this year told me, "Look, you might have a problem, so here are your options." He doesn't, he doesn't necessarily think it's going to pass, because the inrush for the power...
Sure.
...with a fully loaded car is just, it's just going to sap the generator.
So tell me what's going to happen. The generator comes on, the elevator, right now, without doing anything, does the elevator door open? Does people go in and get to go down?
If it's, if it's, right now, if it's not fully loaded, yeah, the, you can run under generator, you can call the elevator back and forth, and the doors open, and that's fine. But if, if the generator goes on and it's fully loaded, it's probably not going to run at all. Now, here's the thing...
What does "run it all" mean? Meaning, everybody gets in there, and they press the button, and the no doors close? Or "run it all," it will just drop all the way to the basement? That's what I'm trying to understand, like...
No, it won't, it will not just drop all the way to the basement. It needs to do that under power. So whether it's dropping or just doors opening, it's, it's not going to work. Now, it would be very rare that you'd actually have 2,500 pounds in the elevator and the power happens to go out. That's not the point. The point is, that's how they're going to test it.
I understand that, and I'm guessing, I'm like, what good is having this that brings the elevator to the first floor and opens, if nothing's connected to it and the door's not even going to open with it?
Door's going to open, it's a battery lowering device, so...
No, 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 skip this, this, we're not doing this.
Okay.
In my head, we're not doing this.
Okay.
I'm up on the third floor.
Yeah.
The lights go out, oh, second floor.
Yeah.
The lights go out, the generator kicks in.
Yep.
Can I walk over to the elevator and touch the elevator?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get in the elevator and push the button?
Yes, and it will go down, yes.
The problem is not that, right now, that works. What Brendan's saying is, when the state comes in in 2025 to certify it, they're going to put 2,500 pounds in it, they're going to turn on the generator and see if it works. He's saying it's not going to work. If it doesn't work, the elevator doesn't pass inspection. Once it doesn't pass inspection, it's off limits.
And so you're telling me, having this, which is only going to, generator kicks in, lights go out, the elevator automatically goes to the first floor and opens the door, that's legal?
But everybody's safe. It's, the, the elevator is, this, this is only so if there's someone on it, when the power goes out, it will return safely, and you don't have to bring in the Fire Department to get them out of there.
For elevator rescue, right. This is about...
That's perfectly acceptable to the state. Those are the two options. There are really three. The building doesn't have a generator at all, and...
And so what about that case? If the, if there was no generator at all, the elevator wouldn't work when the lights went out, is that correct?
Correct.
And if the lights are out and the generator, the elevator's not working, even if we have a generator, but we don't have the elevator hooked up to it, as long as the door doesn't open up and nobody can go in it, then isn't that the same as this?
No, it's if somebody was on it at the moment the power goes out. That's what it's all about. And, you know, we actually have a building that, when it was built, there was no generator, and the code at that time did not require a battery lowering device. But now that we've gone to generator, you can't take the generator away without providing the other option. And it's all because they changed the rules to test the thing under full load.
And the reason I'm concerned about this, I don't like the idea that we have to call the Fire Department to get seven people down from upstairs if they can't, don't have the ability to walk.
But the problem is, so going back to option three, which is a bigger generator, it's not, so I'm the one that recommended, "Let's go to a bigger generator and make this happen." But in doing research since the last meeting, in order to have a bigger generator to make the elevator work properly, we would need a bigger gas line coming into the building. The bigger generator cannot sit on its existing pad, because we have a side, we know that we have an issue with the side of that building, so where the generator sits now would encroach on the neighbor's property, and we already know we're not headed down that path. So now we're going to put the generator out back, because it's our only option. We're going to re-pipe the gas from coming out the side of the building to going out the back. So we're bringing in a bigger line, we're re-piping it, we're pouring a new pad, we're bringing in a generator. So what I thought may go from an $8,700 potential fix to maybe we spend $14,000 with a bigger generator, which is what I thought we could do, I'm now told for everything that would need to happen...
Piping and everything.
...with the piping and everything that would need to happen, we're looking at a $40,000 fix. So the generator, in my mind, that option is off the table. So we're either at, we disconnect the elevator, or we do a lowering unit. Those are really where we stand right now. And, and as far as just not having a generator, in my mind, it's not an option. The generator does continue to run the heat in the building...
No, 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 I'm not saying not have a generator.
And cooling.
I'm just saying not have the elevator connected to the generator.
Right, and refrigeration. So if we have a bad storm, and we don't have a generator to keep heat and cool or whatever, we freeze pipes, now we're dealing with a flooding situation, so...
Plus, when you think about the rarity of the, the power being out with people upstairs, if the emergency to get them out of there is a fire, you can't use the elevator anyway.
Right.
If the emergency is this smell of gas, you, you're not going to touch anything that's electric. So what I'm trying to say is, it would be a very, very small subset of circumstances, Alva, that would actually even want to be able to continue to use the elevator to get people out of the building. You're going to need the fire department anyway.
I, I, I hear you. I also know that wind is picking up more and more every day, and you just never know what's coming down the pipe.
Yeah.
But I get, I get the gist, all right. I just think, I mean, $8,000, so is it really, is it really giving us a benefit? In my mind, it's not giving us a benefit.
Code compliance.
It has to be the, the perfect storm, the person, there's people on it.
If, if I thought we could call, and I don't know the answer to this, if we could call either United Elevator or the state and ask them to come do a test of the generator under 2,500 pounds of pressure, and they were going to charge us $500, I would rather spend the money to say...
I'll find out what United will, I'll see if the state will do it, I'll find out what United will do. United's probably going to be $2,000 or $3,000.
Yeah, I don't want to spend that.
And now you've, yeah.
No, because I mean...
But I'll find out, I mean, we don't have to do this tomorrow.
Right.
And if we're going to do it before the fiscal year, new fiscal year, we're going to have to do it through the Reserve Fund.
Reserve Fund, I understand. I, I guess I would love to know that it really doesn't work before I spend $8,700. If we know for sure it doesn't work, then I'm fully in support of this.
Well, I will also check with the Superintendent of Public Works to see what kind of weights they have. They might have things that could roll in there. I don't know.
We also have, not that we want to cart all of the weights, but we do have the Public Safety Building gym. I don't know how many 45-pound plates they have. I mean, we might be able to get some plates from over there and bring them as well.
Well, that's why I was saying, bags is all.
Yeah. I just don't know how many bags we're going to fit in an elevator.
Well, it's on a pallet.
Plates, at least, you can stack.
Well, you can't, yeah. So I will see, what are our options for testing it, as the next step?
Can I just ask you also, you have, had, have you discussed this with the Council on Aging? Because I just don't want them just to be a surprise.
Not, we haven't done anything in detail yet, because it first came to the selectmen just to understand the issue. But we will definitely do that before any final decision is made.
Perfect, thank you.
The next item is School Budget Coordination Meeting. From time to time, Chairman Pareen and I go to meet with personnel and officials from this town of Manchester and from the Manchester Essex Regional School District. We had a meeting like that recently. We talked really about the big budget drivers, and for the school this year, it's definitely going to be health insurance. I can tell you from the meeting I just went to over the weekend, the Mass Municipal Meeting, the, our insurer, known as Maya, the average increase for the municipalities is going to be 14.8%, up to 19-something. And so we're waiting for that, to see whether their rebid on insurance comes in low and is within the existing budget. But even if it's not, you know, they've distributed a budget recently that requires the town to spend an additional, I think it's like 560-something thousand, more than was spent last year. So, and at, all the while, the Finance Committee is looking at all the requests that the town departments put in. And if health insurance, we carried 15% in the budget proposal from the selectmen, but if that goes in, comes out higher, and we're considering that Proposition 2 1/2 increase in Essex is only around $360,000, that's our normal increase, if the school requires in the mid-fives, where do we go from there? So that's kind of the pieces that are being put together, and I know that there'll be a meeting coming up with the Finance Committee when they meet jointly with the selectmen in February.
Yeah, do we just want to shout out about that? This is on the February 4th, is it, the forum? Is that what it is?
The public hearing.
That's the public hearing.
For the final budgets. They do a tentative, a hearing on the tentative budget in December, and they do a hearing on the final budget in February. That's correct. And, you know, we need more information to really see what's going to happen, but I just wanted to provide the Board with that brief update. Now, with respect to the KPN cable television franchise renewal, all four KPN communities have only one cable provider in the community, that's Comcast. For two times running now, coming up on 20 years, 10 and 10, the second 10 one is going to run out in 2027, we have done a regional cable advisory committee. So that's the four communities contributing members to it. The four communities still end up with their own individual contracts, four contracts with Comcast, but the negotiations are done in a joint fashion. So we were able to have a meeting with Comcast, the representative that's doing negotiations this time, and the four communities. And really, it's going to come down to, since by federal law, the amount of money that a cable provider has to give to the locality and the cable access channel is capped at 5%, it comes down to whether there's going to be any changes in that. Right now, each of the four communities get a point and a quarter from the revenues of the cable provider on a quarterly basis, and the rest of that goes to 1623 Studios. That's what was negotiated almost 10 years ago. Is that going to change any? That's what has to be discussed. So our next step is the four communities are going to meet with 1623 Studios. What are their requests? What are their, what do they think they need? And then it will continue to come together. But we don't plan to sit down with Comcast and a committee, which hasn't really been formed yet, until we know more about what the requests are going to be and whether or not the towns agree with those requests.
And I'm sorry, so for every resident who pay, who has Comcast, you're saying 1.1 and 1/4?
They pay a surcharge.
They pay a surcharge.
And so that surcharge, 1 and 1/4, gets put on every bill, yes. And so as that, actually, 5% gets put on every bill, but a point and 1/4 of it goes back to the town.
Okay.
That, for the town, goes into what's called the Cable Technology Fund, or the Town Technology Fund. We use that for tech projects. The most recently, we most recently tapped it for the new network video recorder and the cameras at the Grove. And, you know, it accumulates quarterly. Pam, what do you think, like $4,000 a quarter we get for...
Between 4 and 5.
And 5,000 a quarter goes into that fund. So, you know, it's, it's like $16,000 a year, max. But it's good when we need it, and town meeting appropriates from that. We had saved up a lot of money, that's why we were able to tap it recently for over So I'll get you more information as the process unfolds. Now we can move to the town meeting topics. I want to call to your attention, and it was a handout that just was given tonight, when it comes to the planning board's items that they plan to undertake, this handout is, is giving you a good update on that. So we're talking about locally how we're going to address accessory dwelling units. These are going to be allowed as of February 2 by state law, but the municipality does have some flexibility in regulating. And so Planning Board's going to come up with a proposal there. The floodplain overlay district, that is something we have now, but the FEMA flood maps are changing, and what FEMA requires to be in your district bylaw is changing, so that will be in there. They're going to make changes to table of requirements for condominium units. They would like to just eliminate language that talked about the temporary zoning moratorium, because it's, it's defunct. And they want to reference a couple of sections in the general use district with some new language. Also, they want to add in Section 6-6-4 development regulations, some screening about landscaping, fencing walls, et cetera. On this, there was a proposal to potentially make a correction. There's one period out of place in one of the numbers of a section, but we've looked at the bylaw, and we have a way to do that by coming back through the selectmen, so that's not going to be done as a zoning bylaw change. And then, we're not sure, the planning board's going to come forward with this, but right now, and I'm going to talk about it later in this meeting, since our 3A compliance is being reviewed after many months, we're told by the state that the mixed use district, there are a couple of things in the district that they're studying. One of them has to do with how the explanation for multifamily units by right is set down at the beginning of the bylaw versus the clearly being allowed in the use table. And we don't know yet, but we might be told that we have to just tweak the first reference to it. If that's the case, it would be good to get that, at least in the advertisement for the public hearing. This public hearing is going to happen on March 5th, as far as we know right now. So that's kind of an update on the planning board stuff, which I put in bold. Then you see the floodplain under that. In the second tier, I have some questions for the Board. A question has come up as to whether the planning board and the Conservation Commission should have revolving funds, because right now, a certain amount of money is set aside in the budget for advertising. And depending on how busy their year is, there may be not enough money for them to put the money up front, because the problem is, it becomes out of sync. Yes, the applicant, no matter how many applicants we have, can pay to the town the money, but it goes into the general fund. So if it's $500 for a particular advertisement and whatever they're doing with the applicant, the 500 goes into the general fund, and the 500 comes out of the expense fund, but if they have too many of those, there isn't a way to actually pay the expense. So that's a concept. You could even consider this for the zoning board of appeals, really. Is it something that you want to consider?
I guess my question on this would be, is it very black and white, in specific, that it's money in, is money out? Not it can build for advertising only?
For advertising only.
So not if there's some extra, at the end of the year, we're going to buy a new printer?
Right.
This is...
So the, it would be explicit in the description of the fund in the article that town meeting would be considering. So what I could do is talk with town council about how we can phrase that and show you that example. I don't think it's a bad idea.
I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure that it's not a way to set aside, you know, an extra savings account, rainy day fund, for a capital expense that's flying under the radar.
Because what it, what it really does is, it allows you eventually to eliminate advertising from the budget altogether.
Correct.
In the first year, maybe you carry $1,000 or something. But once the fund starts and the money keeps coming back in, you never need to fund it again.
Yeah, but I'm still worried about, I mean, what's the difference between coming to the select board and saying, "Can you transfer blah to blah," so that we can...
You go to the Finance Committee.
You go to the Finance Committee, and the issue was, it happened last year, the planning board, with the zoning initiative, they had a lot of advertising going on, and their budget was somewhere in the vicinity of $800 for the year. They needed to do a line item transfer for a good chunk of change. It was like $1,400 or $1,600. And what happens with the Finance Committee, in budget season, they're trying to meet every few weeks, maybe once a month, but during the rest of the year, they only meet once a quarter at best, so they have to call together a special meeting to do a line item transfer. It becomes cumbersome. So this is a brilliant way to do it, provided that it's specific for advertising, in that it's not, you know, if the, if the advertisement is $500, that's what they charge the applicant, and it comes straight out.
So if we have nothing, next year, we have no zoning issues, we're not doing anything. So is money going to sit there? That...
It shouldn't.
That you're not, why would you have advertisement? That's what I'm trying to understand, like...
Well, you're always going to, well, generally speaking, you're always going to have two hearings per year for anything that's zoning-related for your annual and your fall town meeting. So you're always going to need some advertising.
So you would, if you set up this fund, you would put in a small amount of money, so that you'd have money to pay for the first one, and that small amount of money, you'd probably always see in there, but otherwise, it's money in, money out. So do you want me to get a description of what this could look like for possible consideration? So do you want me to get a description of what this could look like for possible consideration or not? I mean, it was an idea that was brought up.
Yeah, I didn't live through the pain, so it seems like it shouldn't be that big of a pain, but then again, I didn't live through it. And I know that, you know, if we just determine how much that minimum is, I just hate to have money sitting in an account. And does that mean that, oh, we should spend that because we can do, here, we can do this advertisement, even though we weren't planning on doing it? You know what I'm saying?
Well, no, and that's what I'm getting at, is that the language needs to be specific, that it's money in from an applicant for a particular project and then money out in the same denomination for said project. The only issue is going to be that the town is going to need to fund it to a certain degree. So we're going to need to start it with $1,000 because our advertisements are $463 per hearing publication. And then each year, it will, in my opinion, will still be in the budget for a line item based on what the Gloucester Daily Times' average cost is, because we have...
Well, it doesn't need to. If you fund the revolving fund with that $1,000, it's always there and it comes, there's no more line item in the budget.
Except we're the applicant twice a year. The town is its own applicant twice a year and there's no one funding that but our own budget.
No, but once you put the, I see what you're saying.
Right, so...
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So either we need to still have a line to fund it as the applicant being the town, or, because yes, I agree with you that...
Small line.
A small line.
And a revolving fund.
Correct. So I am in favor of it because I see the benefit and I think the language matters. So I would like to see language come back that, and I think it would be beneficial for everyone to understand it.
And then the other thing that I put in bold, which is new, again, these are in second tier because they're new ideas. A developer would like to buy 44 Main Street, which is currently, was it Main Street Antiques?
Yes, yeah.
And, you know, a lot of people know that that business is closing after many years and the developer would like to put housing in there. They would like to put 16 two-bedroom units on the footprint of the property, respecting all setbacks and height restrictions. What they will not have is enough sewer flow. And the question is, are you willing to allow the developer, which is in Essex, to put a, something on the warrant to consider the additional sewer flow? It'll be around 2,000 gallons. Right now, our rules require you can get up to 1,000 gallons additional for a property if you're doing a project just by going to the DPW. Once you hit more than 1,000, you have to get town meeting approval. It's happened twice. Rivers Bend got more flow and the brewery got more flow and town meeting approved it both times. Why would this benefit the town? My understanding is that the developer is willing to consider affordable units in this particular development.
So my two questions were going to be, has anyone discussed affordable units with the developer? And the second piece is, has anyone discussed the potential for over 55 housing?
Not the over 55, but I personally brought up the affordable units. And he said, you know, I deal with this all the time. For example, a development of this size in Gloucester, which has prescriptive zoning, we don't, would be probably two units. So, you know, and he's willing to come in and talk to the board more or talk to the Affordable Housing Trust about the potential plans. But I wanted to at least get it in front of the board because he's interested for sure in getting a sewer flow increase.
Go ahead, Ava. It's just, this is very difficult because I'm concerned about town meetings in May. If it doesn't get approved, I, you know...
If it doesn't get approved, they probably won't go forward with the purchase and sale. But right now, the purchase and sale contemplates waiting for town meeting to at least see if town meeting's willing to vote for the flow. So that's already built in.
Do we know if these are going to be apartments or condos?
Condos.
Condos.
So if you had affordable unit, it would mean it would have a market rate ceiling for future sales.
And would it be one, two of them? Is that how it would be if it's 10%?
One or two. We would push for two.
Will there be, so for 16 units, so thinking about the building as it sits today, knowing what that looks like, knowing what the parking lot looks like, I don't see the ability to have enough parking for 16 units.
It's going to be underneath and he's still going to respect the height restriction. This is what he says. He says, "I've got everything but sewer flow. I can, I don't need variances."
I was just going to say, he has it without variances.
Yes. But he needs the sewer flow, so he might be willing to do affordable housing.
Right, well, I mean, that's very appealing to me.
But is it just 44 Main Street? It's not the building behind them?
I don't know what their PNS or their potential PNS looks like.
I don't know. If those are both on the same property, he's buying the whole property.
That's what I was wondering. Because I know that that building behind it is also...
Owned by the same owner currently.
By the same owner.
So if that's part of it, then they would have plenty of parking.
There's some parking, I saw like a sketch. There's some parking that is not under the building and there's some that is.
The parking that's not under the building as it sits today is probably eight spots. I mean, it's not anything to sneeze at, it's just not enough for 16 units.
He said he's done, he figured everything out, he just needs sewer flow.
I guess we need housing. I mean, this is something that comes before us constantly, but we also know we need affordable housing. If the developer is interested in talking to either the Affordable Housing Trust or you directly about affordable units, I would be very much in favor. Without that, I'm not opposed to it, it's just much more attractive if we could get some affordable housing units.
Right, and at this point, it's up to the selectmen as to whether you want to put it on the agenda.
To even put it on the warrant, so...
I mean, would you like me to bring this person in? They're willing to talk to you as a board, or would you rather I just keep talking to them?
I could go either way. I mean, I just, I think that it's, we need to have information so that the townspeople know that we are doing our due diligence, because that's where I think the concern is. I know that, you know, I've heard people come to me about condos in town and I smile and say, things got to, we need more revenue, so, and we can't sit up somebody who might want to put something in.
Right, and this would, this will, even if it's not over 55, which I will ask about, it will certainly add to the tax revenue through new growth, because it's going to be an expensive build.
And I don't think that 16 units is astronomical?
No. It's also not, one of the concerns that you're hearing about the condos and the concern I know that you're hearing was at a particular location on Main Street, and the big issue is the view. People don't want to see the view blocked. I'm not sure that this particular property is going to block any kind of a view, especially if it's going to maintain its footprint and height. Nothing's changing, other than it's going to be much more aesthetically pleasing, brand new.
The building footprint may expand. I'm saying he's going to be able to fit within the...
Within the property, with the setbacks.
With the setbacks, yeah.
Right, so he'll meet all the setbacks.
Yeah, I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed. And so I would say, I don't necessarily feel that he needs to come in. My questions would be, would he be willing to consider over 55 is my first question.
I'll find out.
And then second would be, you know, what would be the commitment to affordable housing units be? And would that commitment be in writing?
Yep, well, it would have to be.
Correct. So those would be my two questions.
Okay, I can find that out. Let's see. On the second page, I did put at the top, possible revision of the Wetlands Protection Overlay District bylaw, and that's because, that's the second thing that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities brought up in their ongoing review of the town's 3A application. And we have, the Wetlands Overlay Protection District is defined by a series of aerial maps from 1974. And their question was, well, if that particular, if the elements of that district in the downtown area, because the wetland maps cover the entire town, if those elements in the downtown area are larger than the wetlands that actually exist, then the state is going to have to revise its calculation to take away the larger area when they're trying to find out how many multifamily units per acre or whatever could be put. And I'm going to talk about this later, but we will not need to do this unless it comes to bear on the 3A thing.
So, and is it, I mean, I'm assuming that to do this, to do a revision, we would have to hire a contractor to come out and do this, so this would be a cost, or would this just be...
According to the town planner, there might be other ways to look at it, including state GIS layers that already exist, and you just say, well, we're going to use this instead. Or you just leave it more generous, because it's unlikely that the things that were circled in 1974 are smaller than the wetlands. They've probably got buffer in them. So it's not going to hurt the town to take that conservative approach. It's just, has to do with the calculation the state's doing and they need to see our little circles versus their little circles.
Right.
And they're going to take the ones that are bigger, because we cannot permit buildings in the Wetlands Protection District.
Right. And our board did such an amazing job hiring this town planner, who is so skilled...
She's so good.
She's so good, that she actually has the ability to take our maps, digitize them, and do a huge majority of the work without having to look for outside help. So I think we're in really good shape.
Yeah. Okay, so on the town meeting list, do you have any of your own comments or questions at this time?
I did not.
The only thing that I had was on the funding of the Town Hall Library Senior Center Annual Sprinkler Inspection. Is this not something that's just automatically done every year? We have to vote for it every year?
It wasn't, it was not...
Underfunded.
Yeah, it was not something that got, there was a sprinkler maintenance line for this building, but it wasn't big enough to cover the annual inspection that we're starting to do now. And so this, which, where is it?
It's on page one, it says app funding.
Yeah, all this is, so we took care of adding some at the fall town meeting for this year. This is just a note to say, we want to actually now make it the correct amount in the beginning of the fiscal year.
Right.
Anything else on that?
Nope, that was, I was just a little bit, whether it should be in fall town meeting or, but now I understand.
So I'll try to bring the first draft version of the actual warrant to the board at your next meeting, so you can see what it looks like in the warrant.
The, one of the things on tier one is regarding the salary of the town clerk. We didn't touch on that specifically and it's not in bold, but we did receive that. I don't know if you're going to talk about that more, but I think we should at least touch on that.
So, you know, our town clerk, who is a master town clerk, decided to take the job for our maximum, which is $77,000 roughly. If you look at the communities around us with appointed town clerks, their range is significantly larger. There are some small communities with elected town clerks that have a lower rate, but with an elected town clerk, you run for election, you get elected and you're the town clerk. Very different from trying to bring an appointed town clerk onboard based on qualifications. And so, you know, I would say that in order to, for the office of the town clerk, be able to retain and in the future maybe attract new applicants, we need to come up. And I would venture to say that we need to come up to $82,000 or $83,000 in fiscal year And that's up to discussion, but it's something that...
But that would be... So, but that's not the range part. That's not the part, because I still would like to keep a range.
I think the range is...
So that if anything should happen to our current...
It would still be a range, but I'm saying the minimum has to come up.
Yeah, I do believe the minimum has to come up.
Or the maximum comes up, you could leave the minimum where it is, as long as you cover...
Right. And I think, so Brennan, there was a really specific reason why we left the minimum at 55, which we all know is much too low. I don't think we should stay there, but I really don't think we should start the range at 77.
Me neither.
I was, I'm thinking 65?
I was thinking 70, but...
Okay, I'm fine with 70. I mean, in this day and age.
And I'm saying that only because I'm looking at the elected positions are at 66, 68, which...
Okay, so I'm with you. So I was at 65 because I saw that there were, you know, some lower numbers, but I see that really the lowest one on the list is 74. So I would say 70,000.
70,000 and...
To 90,000.
90,000, okay.
Are you comfortable with that?
Comfortable with that, I have it written right there.
So I think that we should recommend the new salary range for the town clerk going before town meeting in May from the 55, and I don't remember the...
55 to 77,010.
Perfect.
Okay, that's the range that would be in the wage and salary scale, but for the actual, and you may want to consider it further.
For the actual budget, I'm, I agree with the 83,000 for fiscal '26.
Yep.
You agree?
Yep.
Do you want to vote for that?
I think, I think that would be good.
Take a vote. So I will make a motion to, two motions. I will make the first motion to change the wage and salary scale range for the town clerk to 70,000 to 90,000. Do you want to second that, Alva?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And my second motion is I will make a motion to increase the town clerk's rate to $83,000 for fiscal year '26.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Subject to town meeting approval.
Subject to town meeting appropriation.
All right, and then, let's see. We talked a lot about section 3A already. Basically, it took many months for the state to get to reviewing every community's 3A proposal. We have been in interim compliance for a while now. And so the two things that they're looking at, just briefly, one of them is in the mixed use zoning district, making it clear, either getting a statement from town council that says the intent of the district is to allow multifamily by right and that it's fine, or tweaking the bylaw in one place to show that that was our intent. We do not know yet from the state which one they will accept. The town council thing would be obviously easier. And then the other, we just talked about, they're going to make sure that they do the calculation on the number of units that could be put in that area based on the most conservative wetland no-build zone, which could be our maps versus what they have, which is called their exclusion map. So that's in the works and I'll let you know as we get more information on that. We already went over the Planning Board bylaw proposals, because we covered it during the warrant articles. The Causeway Technical Assistance Grant, this is from the Boston Metropolitan Planning The MPO had a, attended a listening session of the Chamber of Commerce last Wednesday, understand what the business input was on the future of flooding on the Causeway. And this week on Wednesday at 7:00, the MPO will be actually doing a report or a presentation to the public. You could come here to Town Hall, or you could go to the town website and sign up for remote participation, and that is going to be their report on what they expect to happen over time with flooding on the Causeway and maybe get into some possible general solutions. This grant then will feed into, this report will feed into our grant application for a much more detailed study. And then finally, I brought up the fact that there is a television program, public television program called Viewpoint. Dennis Quaid, the actor, is the host of that program. We were contacted by a producer from Viewpoint and they talked to me a little bit about our area and very quickly, he wanted to start talking to the Chamber of Commerce, because the chamber represents the region and he's getting a sense that it's really the region that draws people. The individual towns all have something to offer, but he's interested in the regional perspective. So I'll provide more information. I understand he's going to be talking with the executive director, I believe, this week. And so there may be a future Viewpoint episode on Cape Anne. And that's the report.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions, Alva?
Is Viewpoint on our cable channels?
I think, I think public TV is on the cable channels, yeah.
Is that Viewpoint?
I mean, I know this public...
Viewpoint is on, you know, like Channel 2, Channel 44.
Okay.
Public television. And if, as long as those are offered by local cable, which I think they are, they're part of the cable stations you can get, I believe so, yes. But if you go to their website, you can see samples of the show and what they cover.
Great, thank you so much. We have 10 minutes to go through some other business before the department head meets. We have 10 minutes to go through some other business before the, um, department head meets. So I will make a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $1,541,972.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectman's January 6th, 2025 open meeting and executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on a letter to Jean-Joel Deuce at 92 Southern Avenue regarding an unlicensed lodging house.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to ratify the chairman's signature on a contract for the Department of Fire Services firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of $12,460.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will, I will make a motion to approve a written request for the transfer of Frank I. Hardy Jr.'s interest in the leasehold for the property at 126 Canomo Point Road, Map 108, Lot 66, from Frank Hardy to the Frank I. Hardy Jr. Living Trust, dated November 13th, 2024, Frank I. Hardy Jr. trustee. And further, that nothing in this approval is intended to convey or imply any right, title, or interest in the subject property or any portion thereof that was not already held by Frank Hardy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to appoint Amy Connors to the Position of Appeals Board alternate for a two-year term ending 1/31/27.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the request to pass over town roads from Rich Morel during their annual Barnes &amp; Bloom Half Marathon 2025 from 9:00 AM through 12:00 noon on Saturday, May 17th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have any items that we didn't anticipate?
I do not.
Okay. Licensing, I will make a motion to approve the Class II licenses listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the commercial senior shellfish permit as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the non-resident shellfish permit as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under the antiques license for 2025, I will entertain a motion to approve all three licenses as listed with a contingency that we received the workers' comp certificate from the White Barn LLC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will en, I will make a motion to approve the common vitrulars license for Cape Anne Pizza contingent on receiving the workers' comp certificate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reminders, we do have a public forum with respect to the study of the Essex Causeway flooding by the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is this coming Wednesday, January 29th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. That'll be here in the third floor of Town Hall. And you can also register for remote participation on our town website at www.sxma.org. The next reminder is that we have a webinar with respect to the town's housing production plan, the HPP, presented by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. That's going to be this Thursday evening, January 30th, 2025, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. That'll, again, be here in the third floor auditorium and can also be registered for at the same town homepage. And the final reminder is that the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the third floor auditorium of Town Hall, 30 Martin Street. We do still have six minutes before we start the department quarterly review, so I'm going to call a recess for six minutes. If anyone needs to use the facilities or chat, feel free. And we will come back into session in six minutes. So we are back from recess. It is 7:00 PM, and we are going to start the quarterly department head meeting. I'm going to ask Jay Tetslav to join us at the podium. For everybody in the room, when we speak, um, in the microphone so that the viewers at home can hear us, if we can speak about six or eight inches away from the microphone so that everything is captured. Floor is yours.
All right, uh, first of all, thank you, Ruth, for putting me first. Um, I actually have to be two places, so it'll get me out of the way. As she introduced me, I'm Jay Tetslav. I chair two of the town departments, uh, first the Essex Historical Commission and also the Essex Community Preservation Committee. I'm going to do three things. I'm going to go through the mundane part of the report, and I'll paint a picture for you, and then ask for help. The Historical Commission has a very narrow, uh, purpose, which is to administer the town's demolition delay bylaw. And, uh, there's a preservation easement or, or restriction on the Paul Revere Bell and Tower. So officially, that's what we're here for. And less officially, we champion the cause of preserving the historic resources and character of Essex. A word about the demolition delay bylaw, we've only used it once in the seven years I've lived here, and that was, uh, for the, uh, Timberframe Barn. That used to be where the police and fire station is now. That's something I actively participated in, enthusiastically supported, and voted for more than once. The rest of the story is, the timber frame that we tore down there is on track to be reconstructed, uh, at the Woodbury Hill Farm in Rockport. Uh, talked to the owner yesterday, and he said he's almost ready with all of his permits. So, uh, uh, it's rare to see something that comes down ever go back up. So I'm very excited about that. The picture I want to paint for everybody is that, some of you probably know, we had a, a change-of-use moratorium in place for, what was it, two years? Almost three? Uh, that was lifted earlier this month. So if we had this sneaking suspicion that developers were, uh, looking with a side eye at Essex as a place where they could do whatever they want, first of all, they're right. And second of all, they're even more right now that that moratorium's been listed. So I started keeping a map of what I call at-risk properties. I don't know where the camera is, if people can see this. But basically, this is a map of the downtown district. There's no less than 15 properties that are either in active, active proceedings to be demolished or are for sale and most likely to be purchased by a developer. So, uh, with the limited scope of the Historic Commission, I alone and with that purview can't really bring this to life. But I want to ask for help here and, and have your help doing that. At 10 John Wyche, right across from the fire station, there's construction underway right now on a, a big, beautiful duplex. These seven digits aside, probably. Uh, it's big, and, you know, if you like this kind of a structure, I don't think anybody would be able to argue that it's a bad thing. Uh, it just isn't at all in character with a, with an 18th century shipbuilding town. Across Main Street from 147 and 148, we actually had a developer propose a scaled-down Bhopur Hotel. Take a house and supersize it and put it 10 feet from Main Street. Something like that. Again, this is prospective, not approved, but it's something I saw, because I have it in my hand. What I would say about that is, well, I'm just going to, I'm just going to read verbatim what I, what I said to you, Ruth. I said, "And when 44 Main, another one, that's, uh, the Cavello Store, comes down, because it will, uh, and is replaced by yet another out-of-character structure, pretty soon, you won't have the Essex streetscape that characterized a shipbuilding town since 1819." And realizing that there isn't much I can do, I will be vocal with my opinion that pretty soon, one more will be one too many, and the town will be up in arms about how we all let it happen. So here's the call for help. I have tried verbally, I've tried applying for grants, I've tried going to town meeting. I've tried a lot of different things, none of which have worked. And what I came to the conclusion is that it's not real to people until they see it. So if somebody here knows a videographer, what I'm envisioning is a, a video tour. Take me down the street, exactly like I did in November 2017, when I first saw Essex. And then, instead of what we see now, superimpose this stuff at every address that's likely to end up like this, and to see how people like it. I bet, uh, that will start a conversation. I, I got nothing else. I don't know what else to do, but I think visual is a key. Because every time I bring up preservation, uh, people recoil from that. I don't know what happened, uh, or when, but, uh, it's a reality. So that is the, uh, bit on Essex Historical Commission. Again, the goal here is to start a conversation. I think with all of the needs that we have and the demands that were being pulled, uh, I think we can do all this, and I think we can do it in a way that looks good. But I certainly can't do it by myself. And, uh, if any of you has a referral to someone who could help with that kind of a visual, I mean, I got an iPhone, I can take a video myself. What I can't do is substitute the properties in a way that is in scale and looks realistic. So if anybody knows something like that, um, please reach out to me. Okay. Any questions on Historical Commission?
Alva, do you have any questions?
I do not.
I don't have any, but the call to action is if there's any videographer out there that can help Jay create a streetscape with superimposed houses, you can... Are you contactable by, through the town homepage?
Yeah, the town homepage has my, uh, contact information, and all of you know where I live, so...
Perfect. So if anybody can help Jay, we can reach him through SXMA.org. Thank you so much. I'm going to invite Kate Koch-Sunkwiss to the podium. She is the co-chair of the, co-chair or vice chair?
Vice chair.
Oh, sorry, Jay, I thought you said...
No, Community Preservation.
Community Preservation.
Kate, I'm sorry.
I'll be quick. I also chair the Essex Community Preservation Committee. Uh, this is the body that administers the 1.5% of your property tax that goes to community preservation, uh, more specifically four buckets. Uh, there's an open space bucket, a historic resources bucket, recreational land, and community housing. Uh, we met regularly. We approved one small project in fiscal '25. And the things you may be, uh, more familiar with, you saw some construction going on in the Shipbuilding Museum, it's got a new balcony, uh, thanks to CPC funding. And coming soon, uh, the Centennial Grove Pavilion and Restrooms will be done. Uh, it's under, underway now, it's beautiful. It's tucked away back there, so you don't see it unless you go back there. But if you, if you have a free minute, drive down the road and see, see what's coming. It'll be a great, uh, community space. You'll see in the annual report at town meeting, we have almost $700,000 of previously approved projects in progress. Uh, 275 is the restrooms, 200 was a set aside for affordable housing. I'm sure you'll hear about that, uh, later tonight. And I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe there's pushing a half million dollars available to spend between those buckets and a general unallocated bucket. So, um, again, I, I'll probably be sending out a, a plea for, um, applicants to, uh, suggest projects or, that meet the criteria. Um, and, uh, you know, nobody's got any money, but CPC actually does. So if you have an idea, or if you know someone that wants something done, look at the guidelines, I've got a sheet here that would help. And, uh, uh, we'll meet again before town meeting if anybody applies. And that's it.
Thank you so much. And Jay, um, I know that the Affordable Housing Trust has come before the Community Preservation Committee in regards to setting money aside for the trust.
Yes.
And you didn't want us to ask for any more funds until we had an HPP in place.
Right.
So I invite you this Thursday evening at 7:00 PM to, the, um, MAPC is doing a production here in third floor Town Hall to talk about the HPP and the progress they've made.
It's a webinar, isn't it?
It is a webinar, so you can register at SXMA.org as well. Perfect.
But thank you all.
Thank you. Kate, my apologies, I spoke too soon. Welcome in, I'm sorry, are you co-chair or vice chair?
I am the vice chair.
Vice chair. So Kate Koch-Sunkwiss, Vice Chair of the School Committee.
All right, so the update from the district, I know what you're all waiting to hear, but we're going to leave that to the end. So a few little updates first. We finalized our reserve policy in the last month. We are going to strive to maintain reserves of about 8%, which is a target set with consideration to town practices. Um, we are currently slightly above that and forecast to go well below that through spending of reserves, um, on this next coming year's budget. District review is underway, Desi is in town this week. Um, they are onsite, Pam and, uh, the rest of her crew have been working hard on, um, providing them all the documents and access that they've requested remotely up until this point, but this week they are on campus, which is super exciting. Um, there are a couple of folks, there are a couple of focus groups going on, um, throughout the week. I don't have the exact date and time for the parent ones, but those have gone out to the community already. Um, we have approved the lease of some vans for student activity transportation, which will be a net, um, savings to the district and provide us a lot more flexibility, because we won't be bound to our transportation supplier for transporting small amounts of students after school to activities, like golf club and stuff like that. Um, we had good news on the MCAS, so our fifth graders placed in the top 10% of the state in the MCAS, which is fantastic, especially because that is a, um, grade level that we've been targeting for improvements. Um, more good news, the Spalding Education Fund has been back in action, and we've received, um, a couple of one-time grants from them, supporting our theater program, speech and debate activities, and our art program. All of those are one-time funds that don't need to be renewed there for funding specific trips or, um, materials. All right, so, the budget. The abbreviated version, to carry forward with the same program and reserve use puts us at a natural growth of 9%. The school committee recognizes that this is not feasible financially. Um, I'm sure that everybody already knows, but I will reiterate that the district is in a unique position needing to meet the financial and educational needs of two towns. So, um, we understand what the asks are. We are having a little bit of a difficult time finding common ground across the board. We have, uh, Pam has come up with a proposed, uh, budget that shaves that growth down to 5.4% through the elimination of two administrators and increased reserve use, um, from the district. There's an additional $1.5 million gap to get us down to a 2.5% growth. Um, my concern here is the difficulty finding any solution that is going to recognize the financial constraints and pass at the ballot in both towns. Um, recognizing that we have different populations and that we have different needs within each town, we are, this year, I would say, more than ever that I have been on the committee, struggling to balance two different populations with two different sorts of asks. So along those lines, we will be having a public hearing, um, Tuesday, February 4th, at 6:00 PM at Essex Elementary School. And, uh, the committee is very much hoping to have feedback from all members of the community, not just our school supporters. We don't want this to be a pep rally, we want this to be, um, an open conversation, because we really are trying to find common ground between our towns, between, um, our finance committees, between our residents, between our students. All of these groups are at play, and obviously, we all need the district to succeed in the long run. Um, which brings us to the fun update about Essex Elementary. So, as you all know, Essex Elementary, um, has been in the pipeline for either a renovation or replacement. Um, we were moved into the feasibility phase through MSBA. So, um, sort of starting in December through April of 2025, we will be hiring our project manager according to the MSBA guidelines. There are public interviews of the finalist firms happening on February 26th. Um, this spring and summer, we would be looking to hire a designer and an architect. Into the fall, we would be looking to, uh, wrap up the feasibility, well, sorry, the fall of 2026, the feasibility study and schematic design. We'll be wrapping up that process, it's about 15 months. And then, we will be looking to vote, um, in both towns, either Fall Town Meeting of 2026 or Spring Town Meeting of 2027. So that's pretty exciting to have a more concrete timeline for that and to be in the phase where we're starting to look for architects and designers.
Very exciting.
And I'm sorry, so February of this year is when they make the decision of who made it? Or did we automatically, have we made it?
We've made it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're, the, February, end of February is OPM, the owner's project manager.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do you have any other questions for Kate?
Um, I don't, I was glad to hear that you are still looking at, um, the, you know, the possibility of two admins. And I, you know, it's difficult, but 9% is, is huge.
Yep.
Um, and, um... But, and then I, I look forward to what the Desi finds, you know, what their outcome comes out.
Yep.
And I know that that's not, I, I have, I don't know that I've saw a Desi report be done before, an audit done, but so it'll be interesting to see what, what the results come out.
So they do these pretty regularly, it's a, it's a standardized process. Normally, they don't do them at the district's request, normally they insert themselves and do them. But there, there are publicly available reports from other districts, and ours will be publicly available, we'll make sure that you all receive a copy when we get it as well.
Kate, thank you, that was a very great update, thoughtful in your delivery, thank you so much. So the call to action from the school committee... you so much. So the call to action from the school committee is that they are hoping to hear from people, and I'm going to use Kate's words, not just the school supporters, but everybody. We want to hear from every person in the town that has a voice and that has a position on where the budget should fall. The school committee, all of the members can be reached. If you go to mersd.org, and then click on School Committee, there's a dropdown, and every one of the members' email addresses is available. You can communicate with all of them, or one of them, if, however you see fit. If you're uncomfortable with that, you can send an email to Pam with them in the selectman's office. It can be forwarded. So however somebody feels comfortable communicating, but really, they're hoping to hear from as many voices as possible so that they can be well informed on what the asks are of the community as they move forward. Chief Francis, do you want to join us? I wanted to wake you up, so I brought you up to the podium.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So as I've mentioned in our previous quarterly meeting, we had our three-year accreditation reassessment beginning, beginning October 16th, and it was expected to go through until Feb. Friday, October 18th. In the past, the assessments have always finished early because we were always well-prepared and well-organized. This time, as organized as we were and are, we expected to go all three days due to the fact that we were the first police department in the state that was going to be assessed on a much more comprehensive MPAC Sixth Edition 1.3. But once again, however, the assessment was a complete, was complete a day early, and we were notified last week that the Mass Police Accreditation Commission voted at their December 6th meeting to award re-accreditation. And as you know, I mean, I've kept everybody up to date. We will be attending their February 12th meeting, at which point my command staff and I will be receiving the accreditation reassessment award. Just a couple of things about accreditation. Being accredited has been very helpful in complying with POST-C, that's the POST Commission, which continues to promulgate rules and regulations that require a significant amount of time and effort to document. Just last Wednesday, I received an email from, from Mass Chiefs of Police Association advising chiefs of the recently promulgated 55, 555 CMR 12, which is maintenance, reporting, and audits of law enforcement from POST-C. And basically, what it is, is it's a very comprehensive CMR that they've sent down, that we are now going to have to make sure we take all our personnel files. There's going to be additional stuff in the personnel files. We're going to have to keep them with POST-C files and what have you. And they will be coming into all the police departments at some point. I'm not sure what they'll be giving us for notice, but they're going to come in and they're going to audit our records. So it's going to be similar to the accreditation assessment. So we just got that from Mass Chiefs. We're still going to be, there's still some information we're looking to get and some guidance because one of them was, it said something about keeping track of constables. They don't fall under me, so I'm not sure. We're going to have to get a legal opinion on that. But I'll keep you posted on that, especially you, Brendan.
And Paul, is this going to, does this cost the town money to have the POST-C come out and do an audit?
Well, I mean, it's going to be time-consuming, and there are things that we're going to have to do to make sure. There's certain things in the files that they're going to want that we have to go through. I have to go through all our personnel files and see what we have, what we need, that sort of thing. They're not asking us to create something we don't have, but basically, when they come down and audit, they're going to want everything in a certain way, and that's what they're going to go through. So we're going to probably have to keep separate files, separate POST-C files from their personnel files. So is there going to be a cost to it? I'm sure there'll be some time, you know, there'll be a cost for some of the time, and various things that we're going to have to get for, like folders, file folders, and that sort of thing. But this is something that we have to do to comply with POST.
Yeah, I just, I'm a little bit concerned about having a personnel file that's the town's, and then a personnel file that is for the POST, because something could be missed.
No, and that's the thing. I'm hoping that we don't have to have two separate sets of files, but this is something we're still getting guidance on.
Okay.
And the other thing is, just to let you know, the, so we know we're headed in the right direction, maintaining accreditation. The executive director of the Mass Police Accreditation Commission has just started, as a matter of fact, he started today as the executive director of the Municipal Police Training Committee. So I'm not sure who's going to be the Mass Police Accreditation Commission Director, but now the same gentleman that was in charge of MPAC is now in charge of MPTC. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of similarities, which is kind of a good thing for us, because we're ready for it. Okay. So, and for those who may not know, this past November 4th, we had, we, the selectmen appointed Officer Joseph Fedulo, excuse me, to fill the remaining full-time vacancy that we had. Officer Fedulo comes to the department with over nine years' experience in law enforcement, having started in the Middleton Police Department in 2015. He's a graduate of the Northern Essex Community College Full-Time Police Academy and has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, as well as a master's degree in business administration. He is currently on the 4:00 to 12:00 PM shift, AM shift. On October 26th and 27th, our police and fire departments, along with those from Manchester and Rockport, attended, had an intensive attack, active attack, integrated response training in Manchester. It was a two-day training that we did with police, fire from Manchester, Essex, and Rockport. And the idea behind it was to integrate police and fire, so we get EMS personnel in the building or wherever it is as quickly as we can, because the quicker we get in there, the more lives will be saved if there's a terrible incident. So at this point, we have, all of our offices except for one has been trained in that, and it's the new one, Officer Fedulo. He'll be going to one of the next ones, because it is required training for us. As we continue to work collaboratively with all the Cape Ann Police Departments, as well as Beverly and Ipswich, in the mental health collaboration, we honor our commitment to have all of our full-time officers take the 40-hour crisis intervention team response training. And we currently have three offices in there now. They graduate this Wednesday. And once that's complete, we'll have just one full-time officer that needs to take it. And again, that's Officer Fedulo, because he came, you know, he just got appointed. Some of the obstacles we have to navigate are budget-related issues brought about by situations, unexpected situations that arise and unplanned expenses. We've had a number of unexpected expenses come up, as most in this room know, regarding cruiser repairs that had to be done and having to transfer from other lines to cover those expenses. Training such as the AAI, AAIR training, which I just spoke about, also cost about half of the budget, and this was unplanned, half of the training budget. We're monitoring that closely, so we don't go over. And I'll keep you posted on that. Expectations for coming quarter, we expect to send Detective Wee Way to a two-week required detective's training school. We're hoping for that to take place. He's scheduled now in April, and we're hoping to be able to continue with that and not have to pull him out for whatever reason. Also, this April, like I just spoke of, the last officer that needs to be AAIR trained, will be trained in Manchester. We're going to be doing that, well, I won't be here, but we're going to be doing that training again. And this coming September, all full-time, spring or summer, all full-time officers should have completed the crisis intervention training as well. And that's it for now.
Thank you, Chief. Alva, do you have questions?
No. I was wondering about the training and retraining that happens. Is there some list that shows that, like, is this on your, on the website that you could look at to see what type of trainings that our police departments get? Or is it something that you get advised each year?
Most of it, we get advised each year, but in actuality, it's in, I put the training that we do in the annual report. Like, as a matter of fact, I just sent the annual report out to Pam today. So all the training that we did in 2024 is in that, is listed in that.
Perfect. So Chief Francis, my question kind of piggybacks on Alva's, which is, from a, from a budgeting standpoint, when you look at these trainings like AAR, AAIR, and crisis intervention training, are these required annually? Are they once in your career, every five years? Like, how do you plan on budgeting for training? Because when you mentioned that the AAIR training took 50% of your budget, it's the ex, roughly.
Almost.
When the finance committee has to make difficult decisions about, you know, what line items they're looking at, in my opinion, training for police officers is of the utmost importance. It's probably the most important thing you do is, you know, train for the worst. So making sure that you have enough is, back to Alva, is there a list of trainings that are required and how often, so that as they're peeking at that, they know, like, this is going to cost us X amount every three years, so that they can, I guess, model it out?
Yeah. And the Municipal Police Training Committee sends us out a list of what we're going to be trained in every year, for the most part. There are things that we have to add in, like the CIT, the Critical Incident Team, that is separate. The AAIR was separate as well, but the AAIR, every full-time, every officer needs to be trained in that. But going forward, I believe, I have to double-check on this one, but in two years, there's going to be like a review, but it's not the same, to the same depth.
Okay.
And as far as the mental health training, once they get that 40 hours, they're good. I mean, there may be some sort of refresher on down the road, a year or two down the road, but the main thing is to get that 40 hours. And that, we actually have, we had a grant, we have a grants that we receive from North Shore Health, and that covers that.
Excellent. And just so anybody listening knows, we also have a social worker that works with our police department. And when we have mental health crises, they have on speed dial the ability to call a social worker that comes in to work with our police department to aid those individuals. So my, I have no other questions. My comment is, congratulations to the entire police department for reaccreditation.
Thanks.
And a sincere thank you to Sergeant Bruce, because I know how hard he works on this to make sure that it happens, and usually, always under the timeframe in which is allotted. So thank you both so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chief Hassel, if you would like to join us at the podium.
Same question.
That was to wake you up, so.
Perfect.
I would like to introduce our new fire chief, Christian Hassel. Thank you for joining us. This very first department head meeting, and we had a lovely pining ceremony for him on Thursday night, where we had the governor join us, and Senator Tar, as well as State Representative Anne Margaret, Anne Margaret Frante. And there are some awesome pictures on Facebook for anybody that would like to go enjoy those pictures of the ceremony.
Perfect. You just took my first paragraph.
You can repeat.
So, good evening. As Ruth said, my name is Christian Hassel. I was recently appointed chief of department for the Essex Fire Department. Over the past month, I've been working to better understand our current budget and kind of landscape with operations and just all the goings-on. Though I've been on the department for four to five years, it's, it's looking at it through a different lens, so trying to get up to speed on that. All this with the plan of developing a realistic budget for FY '26. As some of you may know, Essex Fire is an all-call department. What this means is all members typically have full-time jobs outside of the fire department, myself included. When 911 is activated, members come from their homes to the fire department or direct to the scene to aid in whatever's going on. As emergencies become more complex, firefighters need to be trained to meet the, to be ready to deal with the broader scope of emergencies. A perfect example is the AAIR. Essex Fire was a big part of that. We had four, five members attend. It is incredibly important training, dealing with the worst situation anyone wants to imagine, and most people don't want to imagine. So, you know, to kind of touch on one of the questions you guys, you folks had posed on, you know, frequency, it was a 24-hour training, 16, 20-hour training? Yeah. And it was, it was really good training, but from my perspective, I'd been to multiple trainings, multiple hands-on, practical experiences, and it was, it's still not enough. We, in order to be proficient with this, this isn't something that folks are sitting around the station and just able to replicate on their own. It's something that they need, the specialized training, they need to be in real-life scenario. They need to hear what it's going to sound like and what it's going to feel like to really activate the adrenaline and start to think with adrenaline in their bodies. So it's incredibly important training to be able to do with regularity, and I think that's, that's part of it. So that was a huge diversion. So in kind of looking at the budget for FY '26, there are a few key pieces that I wanted to touch on this evening. We have wage and salary adjustment that we're looking at, which will, it is dramatic, but what we are trying to compete with is, we don't have to, we're, we're one of the few call departments on the North Shore, Cape Ann certainly, and we don't have to compete with them as much as we're competing with someone who's maybe a full-time EMT somewhere else, and they can pick up an overtime rate of X. We're competing with that overtime rate to get them to come to the Essex Fire Department to work a shift during the week, Monday through Friday, Saturday, Sunday, whenever it may be. So that's, the salary scale is developed to compete with that, as well as start people at a, at a rate that is more in line with not having those certifications while we pay, pay them to train or become acclimated with the department, go through the orientation piece. A lower rate is very much appropriate for that. Once they get those certifications and they become more valuable to the town and the department, then that's where we're trying to make the increase in wages. So that's, overall, Essex staffs, or at least tries to staff, two firefighters, EMTs, eight, seven days a week, eight hours a day. We run not only two ambulances, but we run all typical fire apparatus that most departments would. And one of the other points that we're, or one of the other items we're looking at is First Do software. So currently, we use First Do software for some documentation purposes from a regulatory standpoint, whether it be fire reporting or ambulance reporting. We are looking to build out the suite to include more scheduling, personnel, equipment management, and tracking. So everything in EMS or the medical side, as well as the fireside, pretty much has an expiration date, right? So being able to project out five years, multiple years, to see where our costs are going to be, and if we're, you know, so we can kind of try to level that a little bit and, and have things expiring at a more reasonable rate and not being surprised by anything. Because ultimately, the surprises are, are the challenge, right? We need to be compliant with this. There's NFPA standards, there's OSHA standards, so that's what we're trying to work through. This software will allow us to track that with automation on notification and reportables and stuff like that. In addition to that, there's a module that we can track our, our larger equipment or our capital assets. It will break down cost for us, so where the maintenance dollars are going. If there's a piece of apparatus that is more expensive than others, we can kind of try to dig into that a little bit. It really just will allow the department as a whole to become more data-driven, make more data-driven decisions. And as we look to reward top performers or folks who are coming to more calls, we also have the information to do that as well. So there is a lot to the software. Outside of that, it is also a pre-planning tool that allows for, whether it be the fire and prevention officer who's going out and doing permits to gather information of changes of plans or panel layouts, or any relevant information that would be valuable to folks coming in to an emergency. All that information will be tied to that address. More importantly, the community members themselves can go in and update their address with any relevant information. If you have a loved one who's maybe memory impaired due to dementia or Alzheimer's, you can put in information about them. If you have a child who likes to be approached a certain way, or is, has special needs around circumstances like that, that information can be in there. circumstances like that, that information can be in there, so we can be prepared getting off the truck to deal with those, and try to de-escalate as quickly as possible. And all that, all that's included in those different modules, there's a lot of capability within the software, and I think it'll really help drive our compliance, and really make sure that everyone's certified, and getting timely notifications when they are coming up on expiration. So, that is that piece. Finally, preventative maintenance is something that we do a pretty good job with. We've had some changes with the maintenance program, where Ernie Niebeli has retired, and we were sending, he was doing a lot of our fleet maintenance. We also have a need to really look at more preventative maintenance as well. Our complex, our apparatus is becoming more and more complex, which drives the need to be maintained. Our ladder truck has an aerial that needs to be maintained annually, as well as pumps that should be maintained and inspected annually. It's just good practice. The last thing we want to do is show up on scene and figure out there's a failure in a pump, or a ladder, on scene, because we didn't do any maintenance. These trucks are supposed to last us about 30 years by NFPA standards. I think the, the money invested into the preventative maintenance program will pay for itself over that time.
Excellent.
That's really all I have. Happy to answer any questions, or talk more on training. We've been working on some ice rescue stuff, just to stay ahead of the curve, although the ice is solidifying nicely. It's always good to be prepared, and kind of, we try to train seasonally for any hazards that may be coming up.
Thank you. Alva, do you have questions?
Um, the only question I have is on this software. So, this is, if it's, if it's got versed in it, I'm assuming it's a fire group type of software.
It is a fire-specific software.
And is it connected at all to our towns, you know, for reporting or anything?
Negative.
No.
No, okay.
It is independent, it's pretty widely used around North Shore, Cape Town. One of the other benefits of it is, so, if we're on it, Manchester's on it, Gloucester's on it.
I'm more thinking of the individual residents, that they've got stuff they do on the web, the town website, than they, if you, if they do want to put in something, you know, a special information, it's just a different website, that's why I was questioning.
And we can always, I think it's as easy as a QR code, so we can publish a QR code maybe on the town website, that'll take them right to the link. It's, it's a pretty.
Sounds perfect.
Pretty easy.
And just, so, mine are more comments than anything, so, training is important, as I mentioned with the police. I fully support our firefighters being as trained as possible, absolutely. First Do, Alva, is actually a software that they use now, so it's, wouldn't be new, they're looking to add modules, so it's, it's just adding to the package that they currently have, and they're finding that it's been a great product, so they're looking to add some more to that. I want to comment, one of the things you brought up was talking about either impaired adults, or children with autism, and I think since we are recorded and being broadcast, and there are people that join us and actually watch this on their Monday night, the police department, and the fire department, as well as the Board of Health, have done an amazing job reaching out to members of the community that do have members, or residents with dementia, children that are autistic, or other special needs. What we're finding is that more frequently, there are, there are people in the community that need what we call a cold response, where we're not using lights, lights may trigger a seizure, sirens may trigger an episode, so those are things that if we know that there are children and adults that are triggered by something, please reach out to the police department, the fire department, and the Board of Health. Although we don't have the First Do module that they can go in and do that online at this time, they do keep a database, and they do make sure that those emails go out to their, to our first responders, so that they're approaching homes in an appropriate way. So, extremely important, and there are members of the community that didn't even realize that that was an option, to reach out to our chiefs, to make sure that that's taken into consideration. The final comment I want to make is just in regards to our equipment. A lot of people don't realize that our most expensive assets in this town, by way of fire equipment, also affects the insurance of homeowners in the town. So, the more, the better the equipment, the more your insurance rates actually go down. I think it's minuscule amounts, but when we have, say, a tanker truck in town, and we have a lot of homes that don't actually have hydrant lines, that helps our insurance policies. So, just a comment, just a plug for equipment being maintained and in good working order. So, I have no questions, but thank you so much for your time, and congratulations again, we look forward to working with you. Brooke, do you want to go? I'm, I'm making Jody go last, because she's with the Finance Committee, and I know her report is going to make me need to cry, so I'm trying not to shed tears until the end.
Is that a good level?
That's perfect.
Okay. All right, so, recent achievements, we, as usual, got the third quarter actual bills, need my glasses, all right, mailed out on time. They're due next Monday, for anyone who hasn't sent in their payment yet. We've been very busy processing all the payments that have come in, and expect to be very busy for the rest of the week. And, let's see, obstacles to current goals and objectives, when I kept looking at that question, I kept coming back to the number of hours in the day. Right now, it's just a very heavy-volume month for my department, for a couple of different reasons, largely because of the bills, but there's also a lot of reporting that goes on in January. I just finished reconciling December, and now I've got to reconcile January in a week. But, we have had a lot of volume, we get more questions on the third quarter bills than we do on any of the other bills, I think just because they're the first actual bills of the year, and so people have more questions, and more detailed questions on those. And as we look forward, is it, for the coming quarter, right now, or I'm finalizing the annual report, I know that's due this week, and soon after that, we'll be focusing on another report that we have to do for our fiscal advisors, something they file for us called the Continuing Disclosure. That takes a lot of time. And then we'll anticipate sending out the big excise commitment bills in February or March. Everyone's always thrilled about those. And then, as we look into April, the April 1st billing should be very smooth. We do all the hard work in December for the January bills and the April ones, so April's usually a lot easier. And long-term goals on the horizon, again, looking forward to taking, spending some time, taking a prep course, and hopefully getting certified as a collector this summer, fingers crossed. And then, from there, I can look forward to taking more classes, to then get certified as a treasurer, I think two years after that.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Alva? Um, the one thing I wanted to ask is, as far as these questions that you have when you get the third quarter, are they similar, like, could we have a frequently asked question page where people can go there before they call you?
That's a good question. We could work on that. A lot of, people often want to work through their own personal numbers.
Yeah, that's what I figured, those you can, but if.
Yeah.
There was.
A lot of it is just understanding, but you're right, FAQ could be really helpful with, this is what a preliminary bill is, this is what an actual bill is, and just sometimes even using the word estimate instead of preliminary is helpful for people, just to know that, you know, the first two bills, we're estimating until we know what the actual full commitment is going to be, and then it's sort of evened out. Sort of, using those sort of words is, is helpful, but I think a lot of people just get the bill on January 1st and get alarmed. But, that's a great idea, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Brooke, I have no questions, thank you. Carla?
All right, hi, everybody. Talking about annual reports, I know you're hearing this a lot tonight, ours has just been finalized, it'll go to Pam this week for the library, but some of the really high points are, you know, continued growth in things like circulation, programs, and attendance. It was a really great year for us. Museum Pass circulation is way up, our Library of Things circulation is way up. If people don't know, I'll put in a plug for everyone who watches this, our Library of Things includes indoor and outdoor games, laptops, peripherals, you know, speakers, things that people might want to use, pressure washer, the single most popular item that ever goes out, and then hotspots for internet use. So, really, big growth this year, and great circulation, and all of, all of those things. And when I talk about circulation, it's print and digital. Obviously, people are walking in and out with books, but there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, that we don't physically see people, but they're still taking advantage of library resources. So, that report will go in, so you can read about it in a couple of months. So, for Q4 achievements, I think I probably hit on some of these, but our, our state financial in compliance reporting is due in, gosh, in October, and then there's some due in December. We've been deemed certified and in compliance with all Massachusetts library standards, again, for this next year. Our trustees approved our five-year strategic plan in December, and that's also something that the State Board of Library Commissioners receives and approves, so that was also immediately approved. So, we have a strategic plan now, with goals that is FY '25 through FY '30. So, there's copies down in the library, you know, send me a note, give a call, it'll, it'll be on the website too, if you want to take a look at that strategic plan. Couple other things that happened, the trustees also approved a preliminary budget ask, and we did a few more rounds after that, but that was in Q4. The staff and I did some staff meeting and some training in November. We went to the middle school to talk with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, that's an exciting week, spending time over there, just so they all know that they have their public libraries as resources as well. So, that's really fun to connect with the young people that we see a lot, but we certainly don't see all of them. This fall, we also saw our window and our ramp fixed, which was great, thank you to everyone who supported that, and the fire alarm system was serviced, which was a real help to me, just for sleeping and not worrying about it going off during the day. So, that's a little wrap-up of Q4. We, I always report on our events and our participants, 49 events with over 500 people in the fourth quarter. That does tend to be a little bit lower, because December, right, Thanksgiving happens, December happens, we can't program quite as much, because there's so much going on in people's lives, but that's, that's a really fabulous couple of months for us, given how busy everyone is. So, no obstacles to progress to report right now. Our expectations for the coming quarter, which we're, you know, 27 days into it right now, after a short break, all of our morning children's programming has resumed, so we've got Monday mornings and Wednesday mornings for three different programs for preschool-age children, and then our adult book club, which has resumed as well. Up next, in January, well, in January, you might have seen the indoor mini-golf, which was a lot of fun. We have a D&amp;D club, Dungeons &amp; Dragons, for middle schoolers going on right now. There was a great felting workshop right up here last week, some of you might, some of you were there, I think. In February, we'll have our Rummy Cube Club this weekend, and we're also celebrating National Take Your Child to the Library Day, so anyone who hasn't come yet, we're doing a thing on Saturday with Valentine's, we'll have some health and wellness programming, and then school vacation, of course, is coming, so there'll be some things for kids and teens. In March, our Rummy Cube continues, so come on by on March 1st, the first Saturday, we'll do a pet loss. We've been doing that as an ongoing series. Ted Reinstein's coming to talk about his new book, right up here in March, that'll be fabulous. We'll celebrate the Cat in the Hat's birthday, do some printmaking, and then a coffee class. So, never, never a dull moment in the library world. We will be closed on Monday, February 17th, for the holiday, and that's also the school vacation week for the rest of that week. And this coming Saturday, on February 1st, we're actually starting a pilot of adding an hour on Saturdays. So, on Saturdays, during the sort of winter and spring, we're open from 10 to 12. We're going to pilot 10 to 1. Everybody comes in at 11:45 on Saturday mornings. I think it's in that list with, you know, going by the post office, and taking your trash. So, we, we heard actually loud and clear in all of the survey and community work we did for our strategic plan, that people wanted some additional hours. So, we're piloting the Saturday hour, we'll see how it goes, sort of, winter through spring here, and we're considering piloting another patron request, which was another weekday morning. That's more complicated, because I'm limited in my staff and their hours, so we're still, we're still thinking about that, but that increased hours are by far the biggest patron request, particularly a morning and a Saturday. So, we'll work on those. For long-term goals, our kindergarten readiness playgroup, which is run through the grant through Hamilton Wenham, will start again in April. That's become a fairly regular spring offering, which is, is great, helps to reach out to families who have kids getting ready for kindergarten, and it's kind of your first entry into that. I have a senior at the high school, I'm coming in for a SCORE project in, I think the window is April and May this year, and they're going to research document and label the art collection in the library. We've got lots of really lovely local art, with not enough documentation, so that's going to be a great project to get done. We're looking at our technology upgrades this spring, and part of our strategic goals were emergency preparedness planning for the library specifically, thinking about collection, staff, you know, meeting the needs of our community post-emergency. So, that's part of our goals, and that work I will begin as well. I don't have any concerns right now, and I don't have any recent grants to report, so I would love questions or feedback.
Um, my only question really is the hours, what's your, especially for middle school or high school kids to be able to use the library?
Yeah, so our library, our hours right now, during the week, we open at 1 o'clock every day but Thursday. We stay open until 7:00 PM on Mondays and Wednesdays, so we get that post, you know, work, sort of, school, practice, all of it. Thursday morning, we open at 10:00, so we have that little earlier opening, when we see a lot of our senior population, actually, and that's a big part of the request. I want to go to the library when there are not school buses on the road, because that's when I drive, is when there's not school buses on the road, when it's definitely daylight, and so I'm not, you know, doing the afternoon, edging into dusk, because lots of people don't want to be driving then. So, we're open until 5:00 or 7:00, really, every day during the week, and then the Saturday just gives a little more time around all the kid stuff that's going on, and all your chores that you're trying to do. So, we're at 29 or 30 hours would be what we're at every week. Yeah.
Carla, my one question is, when you talk, you mentioned the annual report, and that circulation has been reported, do you break out in-person circulation versus online circulation?
We do, yes, yeah.
I'm just curious how those compare.
Sure, sure, and that, those go up and down. I'm sure I've talked to this, talked to you about this, because I've reached my first year, so I've done a full year of reports now. So, our print circulation is 33,600, so that's calendar year '24. Our digital circulation is almost 7,000 for calendar year '24. That one is up significantly. We're seeing our digital circulation increase faster than our print circulation, not, I'm not at all surprised, right? We're all walking around with computers in our pockets these days, and we're doing more and more on those, research, reading books, looking at magazines, all of those things.
Of the 33,600 that are print, are those physically people walking into your library to check those out?
It is, or we're sending a book to be picked up, you know, at the Rowley Library. Right, yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's all I have, questions? You're good?
That's great.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Jody? And I do know that we have people online for Department Head Meeting, so I'm just doing in the room, and then I'll move over to online.
Okay, I'll do the easy one first. Economic development, there isn't a lot going on at the moment, but Brendan, Ruth, and I've been meeting quarterly with the chamber to collab- I have been meeting quarterly with the Chamber to collaborate on business needs in town. Of course, the climate change, sea level rise is of the most concern. We've discussed other things, such as licensing and whatnot. I think that that has been a good collaboration point for us. The Grove Pavilion, as this project continues to progress and we get the restrooms built, we will finalize the plan. Donna Roy developed a plan for renting the Grove Pavilion, so we're looking forward to the time when we get to implement that plan and we continue to do work on the Guide to Doing Business.
Can I just, are you done with the EDC?
Yes.
Because I just want to ask, as far as that Grove rental, is that something that you're going to write up? Is there a policy or is something I, just because I know that the public issue does, I've never heard them say, "Yay, you did a great job." So, you know, just so they understand what those, what the process and, you know...
Exactly. So Donna has fleshed out a plan. There'll be more work on it. It'll come to the Board of Selectmen, because, again, it's a rental piece. And then there'll be some type of online platform that you'll be able to book the pavilion. It will obviously, we'll run it, just like Manchester runs their model, where it will go out to town residents first for a period of time, and then it will be available to others. So not there yet, getting closer.
Great. No questions.
Perfect. Finance Committee, that's what we're all waiting for, right? We are in the throes of budget season. This is going to be a particularly challenging year. I think you probably hear that every year, but this year, I can guarantee that it will be. We have two union contracts in negotiations, so we have placeholders there. We have escalating health costs. Brendan sent me an email today saying that we're looking at close to that 15% number at this time. We know that things change. We have increased costs in electricity and gas rates. Chief Francis will be retiring and will be replacing Chief Francis, and there'll be a new contract, so it's another question mark of where we are there. There's one other department head who has expressed that they will be retiring in FY ' '26, so that's yet again another factor. I think one of the most important budget factors this year will be the Fire Department. We've, congratulations. Christian, Chief Hassel, welcome, welcome to chiefhood. We've been working on the budget with Christian. He's great in fleshing out the details, which is what the Fire Department really needed. For those of you who forget, we are 100% call, and that means that people not only leave their homes, but they leave their jobs to come and save you with, it's the ambulance, your house is burning down, and we are paying these people under $25 an hour to come and risk their lives. So the wage and salary scale will be important to make some adjustments. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like. I know what the ask is. I don't know how it fits into the budget, but it is extremely important that we fight to keep our call Fire Department. If we can't, we're looking at a 10% increase in our town budget. It'll be in the million-dollar range, and Chief Hassel assured me it would be at least that and probably more, to go from our model of a call Fire Department to a full-time Fire Department. It's a huge, that's a huge tax jump. So I think Chief Hassel is committed to trying to keep us call as long as possible, and that means we need to work through some changes in that department. The school budget, Kate, you know, delivered the news that at this moment, the school budget is at a 5.4% increase for Essex. With that number, after apportionment, that is a 5.68 increase. It's $561,395 for an increase in the school budget. For perspective on that, our levy limit with all of our new certified growth is approximately So we look at, we're looking at challenges there. We're looking forward to the second hearing for the school budget. I also am looking forward to hearing from Superintendent Bowden, who said that she would like to put together a financial team to talk about strategy on what the school budget looks like and how that might be retrofitted into the town's budget. That has not come to fruition yet, but we're waiting for that. That's, I think, very important. They're also carrying their health insurance at 10%. They started out at 24. It was their big budget driver, and they have dropped that to 10, but with Brendan's memo today and what he was hearing from MIAA, and I think they're looking at MIAA, that might be 15%. That's another increase of $205,000 to their budget that is not baked into that 5.4%. So that is our biggest outside-of-town stressor on our budget will be that piece. That being said, our really good news is that our town accountant, Michaela Nolan, is doing a great job. She has put together budget packages for the Finance Committee. She's gone above and beyond. She's taken classes. There's a lot on her plate. We promised department heads that they would get weekly and monthly reports so that they would no longer have to do sub-accounting in their departments. And at a recent visit with the Police Department, Chief Francis said to me, "You know, Michaela's doing a great job. We're not doing any sub-accounting anymore. We get the reports, we check things off." I don't know, it was the threat, or I was going to teach firearms class, if he was going to do accounting, or whether Michaela's really great, but Michaela's on top of things. And I think for department heads, I think that makes a huge difference. So I'm not just hearing it from Chief Francis, but I think it's, it's a big leap for the department heads to be able to trust what they're getting, getting timely reports and saying, "Hey, this is great. I don't have to do all of this extra work." So Michaela's been with us now for seven months, and it's a huge effort for what she's doing in that department. So right now is a stressful time for her, so if you need something, and you can wait, maybe you can wait. What we are, what we did do as an ask this year from the Finance Committee and the town accountant, we asked the department heads to flesh out their budgets by line item. And that means we wanted you to break each line item down and let us know what the components of that line item was. The reason is, we started out, I think it was two faulty town meetings ago, asking for money for an operational review of the school budget, which passed, and right now they're doing the DESI review. And in asking for that, we started to look at ourselves, and we heard that Manchester was doing an operational review internally. So we doubled down on the asks for department heads so that we could have more transparency. And I'm going to tell you that I think all but one department has given us incredible detail. And I've heard from multiple departments that they actually thought it was a great exercise, because they, for the first time, really sat down and fleshed out each piece of their, of their line items. And I think as a working tool, it will move forward and help in budgeting, make it much more transparent for the Finance Committee, but also within departments. So if there's personnel change, you actually have a living, breathing document that you can pass on to someone. So we truly appreciate all the effort that people are going through to give us that type of detail. It's important. The Finance Committee's talked about doing another tax talk, and this kind of hooks on to the assessing piece and the tax bills. So when we did the tax talk, I don't know, a year ago November, prior November, we touched on assessing, and people wanted to delve into that more. They wanted to understand tax bills, they wanted to understand how they were assessed, and I've talked to the Assessing Department, and they agree that, you know, that's going to be a great collaboration. So we'll look forward to that, working on that project after we get past budget season. I think that's, do I have any concerns? Yeah, I have concerns about getting a budget to town meeting. I can't stand here and say that, you know, we aren't out of override territory. There's the money within Prop 2 and 1/2 and our new growth, which has been considerably more than most years over the last 10 years. And again, that's thanks to the Assessing Department, being on top of projects and closing out permits and whatnot is really helpful. But there are some pressing situations, I think, in our town that we need to meet before we even get to the school budget.
Alva, do you have questions?
I don't.
My one question, having sat through every Finance Committee meeting, I know that the goal of kind of an internal review was transparency, to make sure that we know what every department's doing, where we're spending our dollars, to make sure that we're being as frugal as possible. When you mentioned that there was one department that had not provided you information on line items, is it safe to assume that that was a department of one that's a part-time department and didn't have time to do that?
No, it's one of our largest departments.
Largest department, okay. That was my only question. Thank you. Turning over to online, I see that we have, from what I can see, three people. Amy, if you want to unmute yourself and say hello, we have Town Clerk Amy Akal with us.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. I'll be pretty brief. Right now, we are in census and dog license time, and those are both going well. I've licensed about 250 dogs, so those are coming in quickly and with almost all of their required information. Something else that's happening right now is nomination papers are available for the May annual town election. So the dates are on the webpage, as well as the open seats that are going to be on the ballot. So right now, the deadline to take them out is Wednesday, March 19th, and the deadline to return papers is Monday, March 24th. Really, we've, we got through the November election, certified the election, everything went well. The special town meeting, the Attorney General packet, went to them in, I think it was either very late December, late November or early December, so I'm expecting to hear back from them in late February or early March. Hopefully, they will approve everything that we passed at town meeting that was zoning or by law related. And that really is what's going on in the Town Clerk's office right now, hoping for a quiet spring and summer with no state elections on the horizon, and just getting to know the office, getting to know everybody, and meeting townspeople, and just taking it day by day.
Perfect. Alva, do you have questions?
I don't have a question. I am impressed that 250 dogs have been registered already, because I usually wait till the 30th of March, or whatever the deadline is.
March 31st is the deadline.
There you go. Put that in your calendar. Alva's making a note of that. Amy, I don't have any questions. I do just want to extend my gratitude. So, welcome. We're thrilled to have you. And for everyone to know, I had a question and, I guess, a comment on one of the applications that we use annually for Shellfish, and I sent my request over to Amy before the end of business, actually, I think, within about an hour. She had updated the forum and had it published online, and it's the new forum that our Shellfish people are using. So Amy, thank you very much for just being so awesome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm very happy to be here, and I'm really enjoying getting to know everybody.
Thank you. Lisa, you are next on the list. Lisa O'Donnell, I'm assuming is Lisa with the Chair of the Planning Board. If that's you, unmute and say hello.
Hello.
Hi there.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, excellent. So our recent achievements are not that significant. We passed one article with some new definitions in it at the Fall Town Meeting, and as I'm sure everyone's aware, Residential Districts was indefinitely postponed, so it neither passed nor failed. The Planning Board will be working to bring that back in the future. We're not sure yet whether it will be changed much, or we just have work to do on that, and we've reached out to the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, to see when, how and when we can work with them to see what the business community would support. So that will likely surface in November again. Right now, we're looking at five or six articles for Spring Town Meeting, Annual Town Meeting. Three of them are housekeeping ones that aren't really worth talking about. The ones that will have some significance are capturing ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units, which will be allowed by right in new state legislation that is going to go into effect on the 2nd of February. So we're working to advertise next week so that our ADU bylaw will be advertised ahead of that deadline, and essentially, when a planning board's proposed bylaw updates are advertised, they're considered to be in effect until after town meeting, and then if they pass, they are in effect, and if they don't pass, then they're not in effect. So we just want to make sure we get out ahead of that, and we're really proposing something that's very much in line with what the state has. The other articles will add some language to capture condos as principal buildings on lots, because, and I'm talking about houses that are condos, because something that's happening now that people are doing to avoid the subdivision process is to take a lot of land, and instead of subdividing it, building single-family dwellings as condos and conduing the property. So we just want to make sure that these properties are developed consistently with how we would have land development in single-family areas, which allow up to three principal structures on a lot that's large enough. And then we're also going to be looking at adding some language around buffers between businesses, new businesses and/or expanded businesses that abut residential properties, and this is sort of a stopgap measure, because Residential Districts didn't pass, to provide some layer of protection to residents that might be having businesses move in next to them or businesses expand next to them. So those are what we're looking at. Those will be up in May. As far as long-term goals, like I said, we'll be continuing to work on the Residential District effort and seeing where that leads us in the future. And we don't really have any concerns, and we don't do anything with grants, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Alva, do you have any questions?
I don't, no.
I don't. No questions from me either, but thank you. And finally, we have Michaela Nolan. Michaela, if you want to unmute. I know Michaela is home because she is tending to a baby, so she may...
A sick baby.
A sick baby. Give her another second. Michaela, if you hear me and you are available, feel free to unmute. If not, we will thank you. Jody's saying your praises, so we know you're doing amazing, an amazing job, and I come to the Finance Committee meeting, so I know that that is a true statement. So thank you for everything you're doing. Okay. I feel terrible that she stayed online this whole time and didn't get to speak. But having no other further business with the department heads, you are welcome to stay, but we're about to go into executive session, and we're going to be leaving the room, so you're also welcome to leave and have a fabulous evening.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We appreciate it. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, Michaela, hi, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Ah, I'm sorry about that.
So you do not have to give us a big report, but if you want to report on anything out of the accountant's office, we're happy to hear it.
So I successfully completed the state requirements for the first time. I'm currently enrolled in a course with the Mass Municipal Association in Suffolk University, just to deepen my understanding of everything. Current goals, I am working on step-by-step instructions in the accounting department. So if I'm never, if I'm not there for some reason, someone can open a binder and know exactly what to do. It's also helping me to have a deeper understanding of everything. The expectations of the upcoming quarter, it's going to be busy with the budget, as Jody had mentioned. Long-term goals, as always, stay ahead of changes in the laws, financial reporting standards, and other regulatory frameworks to ensure ongoing compliance.
Great. Alva, do you have any questions?
I don't.
I don't have any questions, but Michaela, at the last finance committee meeting, I was able to use one of the finance committee members' binders, and it is absolutely amazing. So great job. Thank you for what you're doing. You're doing an awesome job, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now there really isn't any other department head business, unless, there's somebody online listed as unlisted. I don't know who that is. If you're a department head, feel free to unmute and speak now. And if you want to remain anonymous, you can stay anonymous. Okay. So we are going to be going into executive session to talk about one of our unions. Oh, yes. Is, is there any public comment online? Okay. Any public comments in the room? Having no public comment, we are going to...
So I'm going to recommend that the board move into executive session to discuss, have discussion with respect to collective bargaining concerning a possible successor agreement with the Essex Police Association, that the chairman declared that an open discussion of this matter would be detrimental to the town's negotiating strategy, and that also she declared that the Board of Selectmen will not be reconvening an open session this evening.
So I will make a motion that we move into executive session by roll call vote.
Inga Harrius?
Ruth Perrine, aye.